Good evening, everyone. We'll open the meeting. Please throw eyes for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin public comment, I believe everyone here knows the situation that occurred about three weeks ago. And with that occurrence, that fire at the middle school, I want to thank many people this evening who worked overtime, overtime, over time. You can't really quantify the hours that they put in to put together a school within a school. So I would like to thank all our top administrators, from superintendent right down to our principals and assistant principals. I want to thank Mr. Peter Miller. Peter spent countless hours tracking down equipment, coordinating both what was happening at the middle school and what needed to occur up here in the high school to make this a school within the school. I want to thank all our directors, from transportation, food service, director of technology. Everybody worked tirelessly to put this all together. So I think they deserve a well round of applause for what they accomplished in three weeks. So now we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Up to the mic, please. When the final report will be issued for the cause, the actual cause of the fire?
We don't know that timeframe right now.
Who's handling it?
When it does come out, it'll be identified and provided to the public at that point in time.
Okay.
Right now, there's various organizations involved in that research. There's no one specific person right now.
But there's no preliminary indication?
Our insurance company is working with investigators. That's all being handled right now.
Okay, I understand.
It's basically in the hands of our insurance company.
Okay, but there's...well, all right. Will there be a final cost of all the moves and the overtime that has been incurred? Will that be uncovered by your insurance?
That's all being covered by insurance. And at that point in time, if they want to divulge what the actual costs were, they would do that. Right now, we're working under their jurisdiction.
Okay. So we don't know when the final report will be issued, so that people can find out what actually happened?
At this time, no. Right now, it's accidental.
Accidental. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll move on with a special presentation this evening. Lindsay's going to recap our budget planning. At this point, I'm sure she's going to tell you that we have no good news from the state at this point in time.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes. So this will be a recap of the last board meeting presentation. What we're discussing is our draft revenue budget, with the review of the updated expense budget, and what the changes were since March 19th, which are slim. What we're waiting for is to hear back from the state on the legislative budget. So as I mentioned before, there are two ways that school districts get revenue. The majority of it is through taxes and through state aid. And what we're waiting to hear from is the legislative budget to see if they're going to restore Save Harmless, which will give us about $80,000. And if they give us an increase, let's say that it increases 3%, we will have, including Save Harmless and the increase, around $450,000. So that's what we're waiting for, to hear back from the state, which we would be able to add into the budget, which is why that yellow highlight is up there, because we have not heard back yet from them. There are reports that it's supposed to come out Thursday, but they do keep delaying it. So we are not sure as of right now. So what I have done was broken down the draft budget, expense budget, based upon the administrative response from the last board meeting. So in those categories, you'll see that general support is going down, instruction is going up by around a little over $200,000. Our transportation is going down due to the positions that we took out of those budget. Community services remains the same. Debt service, and I'll go back to employee benefits, debt service is going up close to $300,000. Inter-fund transfers, this has to do with we're now adding UPK transfer in, so you'll see an increase in that. And as you can see, our biggest increase expense is over $1 million, which is employee benefits, which tends to increase, at least the past two years it has, by 12%. So if it continues this way in the next few years, you're always going to see those employee benefit numbers be over $1 million. And just to give you an understanding of that, that's how much our tax increase was this year. So it is something that needs to be discussed. So this gives you the breakdown of what is actually going into the budget and where those increases are. So with that administrative response, we do get a balanced budget without knowing what the legislative budget will bring when it comes out. So topics for discussion for our next board meeting is we're going to continue to review a few things. So there are fluctuations that happen in the budget, which tend to do with our BOSI's FSR being finalized in special education. So I will continue working with Dr. Boyd on that. And what we need to do for next steps is just wait to see what this response is going to be from the legislator, and then we can move on with our final proposed budget, which does have to be approved at the very latest on April 26. The propositions that are in the budget as well is for two buses, which are propane, and then our proposed new capital reserve. Now, the capital reserve only lasts for 10 years. We currently have a little over $1 million in it, but this proposal is moving that $1 million into the new capital reserve, so it can be used through there on future capital projects or infrastructure upgrades. So this is not putting any more money into the reserve. It's actually just moving it into a new reserve because it expires after a certain period of time. So that will be the other proposition on the ballot. And again, this is just our budget calendar. The next budget presentation and the next board meeting before we are to adopt the budget is next Tuesday, April 16th, where the budget should be adopted and the property tax report card also approved. Anybody have any questions?
Is there any indication when the governor's going to have a finalized budget?
They said Thursday, but they could extend it again.
Okay, and we can go out to the 26th?
I have to submit it on the 26th. So it would need to be approved prior to that.
And just so everyone's clear, I'm sure you're thinking about that capital reserve and that $1 million-plus dollars. That capital reserve is separate from our general budget. So we can't use that money at all to offset the gap that's in our regular budget. That money is earmarked for capital projects. And when we established that about eight, nine years ago, we've been able to do two to three capital projects with no impact to the taxpayer. So all the infrastructure upgrades, the new athletic field, track, and all that, it's come about because we were able to put some money into that capital reserve, and they use that money to offset the overall budget of the project, and it becomes tax neutral. So we can't really touch that money at all to...if you have any thoughts of why can't we put it into the general, to balance the budget, we can't do that at this point. And we're just establishing a new one because the old one's expiring. So we're moving that money over just to keep that capital reserve going for future capital projects. Anyone else have any comments?
Just a comment. With the delayed budget from the state, again, if Friday we don't have it, should we just look to have another...I'm just concerned like we have a meeting on Tuesday and then the time to turn everything around might be very tight.
We'll leave that up to Lindsay, if she can get everything turned around by Tuesday's meeting. Otherwise, we'll just delay it a few days and have a special meeting. We can do that. We want to make sure that we have the ample time to put everything together and present it. Anyone else have questions?
What's the absolute latest that we need to have it approved?
So I have to submit it on Friday, the 26th.
Okay. So we have next week.
At this point...
So I would just add, the difficult part of this whole exercise that we go through on a regular basis is we have to start this budget planning in January and February. New York State is mandated to have a budget by April 1st, and rarely do they ever meet that April 1st deadline. And so it keeps schools in limbo as to what we can and cannot do to move forward. It's very disheartening that year after year, doesn't matter who's in charge at the state, doesn't matter what governor we have, I feel like we put our employees on the front line of these conversations every single year. And I wish somebody from Albany would start listening to that, because this is not a Highland Central District, Central School District problem. This is a New York State education system problem. We have to have our budgets voted on by the third week in May, and we have to have our budget done. No questions, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It needs to be ready to go. But yet, our leaders seem to be able to take their days and, you know, play politics, if you will, with education. It's very disheartening. I've had this conversation with a number of legislators in the last, I can't even tell you how many I've spoken to, whether they're from my region, from this community, from my own community across the river, or from places across the state when we go to state conferences, that this is just absurd that we put schools and employees and kids and families through this every year. So I do want to applaud my administrative team for working so hard to try to respond. These were not easy responses that we presented at the last board meeting, and quite honestly, they were devastating for us to have to make responses in that format. So I spoke to Assemblyman Jacobson at the foundation dinner the other night, and basically begged him to get to Albany and get the ball rolling so that we can reduce some of the anxiety that unfortunately we are forced to put upon our people year after year after year. So he made it very clear that it looks like Save Harmless will be returned, but again, it has not been returned. But he indicated that it should be returned, and that they are looking for a percentage, but they're not sure what that percentage would be. Lindsay calculated out what a 3% increase would be. That is still devastating to our school district and to our faculty and staff. So I just need to put that out there, because even with money's returned from the state, this district has some difficult decisions to make moving forward.
Lindsay, can you explain to the board, if we adopt next Tuesday without the state budget being in place, and then they fortunately give us more than we expect, at that point, we can amend the budget and move forward?
You would...you're adopting that budget. That budget would be voted on, and then you can do an amendment after July 1st. But whatever you adopt, we would need to...that's what would be voted on, and then you could do an amendment after the fact.
We can't amend until after July 1?
Correct. Because of all of the publications and everything else that has to go out and what we have to show, we can't get that done prior to.
So it's in our best interest, then, to wait as long as we possibly can to know if we have something. In the end, if our date comes and they still don't have a budget in New York State, I mean, that's obviously another bad look for them, but we should wait as long as possible, I would think.
All right. No, I agree with that. I think the governor, the legislatures, the senators of New York have heard from everyone this year, more so than in other years. So I'm hoping that they're going to adopt prior to. They know what the deadlines are, that they should be able to adopt. Last year, I believe, they adopted in May 1st, but it wasn't that much of an issue throughout the state than what it is this year. I'm going to do...I'm going to allow our audience. I know we have a lot of support here from our staff, teachers and support staff. So if anyone wants to come up and make a comment, I will allow that. But keep it short, and we can move on. So if you'd like to come up and make a statement regarding your feelings of, you know, what the state is doing to handcuff school districts, feel free to do it.
I'm going to ask a question at this point.
Sure.
Lindsay, when and if we are put in a situation where we have to amend or can amend the budget, it has to happen after July 1st?
I can double-check that, but I do know that once you adopt this budget, this is the budget that the public will need to vote on. But I will check to see whether it's before or after July 1st.
At that point in time, though, you will have left the district, correct?
Correct.
So we'll have to have a...
You'll have somebody else to amend the budget, though.
Okay.
The bigger issue that I...
It still has to be approved, though, too, right?
I'm sorry?
Does the amended budget have to be approved?
By you.
By the public?
By this board.
By the board?
Because you would know what money is being...no, not voted on again. The board would be determining what would happen. But I think the bigger issue about whether Lindsay's here or whoever's in the position, we run a major risk every single year when we put those positions up on that screen. We're not handing somebody a pink slip, but we're putting it on a screen that they think that there's a pink slip coming their way. And this is how school districts lose quality people. Because if I saw my position up there... If I saw my position on a screen, you're darn right, I'd be looking to go somewhere else, because I need to make sure that I keep my career moving forward. So no, there are no official pink slips at this point, but the writing was on the screen, and that's the difficult part for these folks. And I see many of the faces.
Can I just say, like, I'm in favor that if we have to delay, I'm with Heather, I'd rather not have to go forth and do an amendment, because, as you said, there's a lot of decisions that will go forward, and so I'd rather put something forward that we feel comfortable with than to do an amendment and have to go through all the, you know, the conversations that would take place.
Yeah, I agree with that. Tom, just to be clear, the vote would not be a community vote. It'd be the vote of the board to amend that budget. And I do agree, we're going to go as long as we can to adopt that budget, but I'm hoping that the governor proposes a budget prior to that. You know, there's too many districts out there that are in the same situation, and it's really unfair to all the communities and all the staff of every school district in the area that have to suffer the cuts that's going to come about because of, you know, the lack of interest on the legislatures and the governor's part to fund education. I mean, I've said this many, many times, that I feel there's simple ways to fund education, but nobody in those positions want to do that. They always want to save their jobs. They're afraid they're not going to get reelected, so they follow suit with each other. But there's many ways that they can fund education and not affect a person's pocketbook that much, believe me. I mean, if you remember, I'm old school, back in the '60s, when the lottery was established. The lottery was established 100% for education. And as it started to grow, these politicians realized, there's a lot of money in that pot. Let's pull a little and fund this. Let's pull a little and fund that. Now, today, we're getting that much of lottery money to fund education. That's a shame. That really is.
Got it. I just wanted to let you all know what we're doing, too, as we're working to establish as much help as we can for this budget. Corey and I have been meeting with NICITS lobbyists. They're head lobbyists for the state of New York. Jim Larson is the head lobbyist for the state of New York, and we've come up with an action plan, and Highland is spearheading that plan. Yesterday, we went around the buildings, and we took about 150 videos of our staff members of how these budgetary cuts are going to impact our members and our membership and our education and our level of education that we're going to receive here at Highland. And that information is going up to the governor as we speak at this point. We're spearheading that, this small local here. We're meeting with politicians, calling politicians on a regular basis. I was honored that Joel went up to the rally right before the break, one of the few superintendents that were there to support public education. We were there. We had an opportunity, a lot of our younger teachers had an opportunity to talk to the politicians. I believe we have Senator Hinchey right now championing for all of us. I believe we have Congressman Jacobson working for us, multiple phone calls to him, just trying to get them to establish not only the reinstatement of the foundation aid, not only a potential 3%, but they're missing the point that the formula of how they're giving state aid to school districts is off. And we were one of the first school districts, one of the first locals, to identify that and bring that to our legislators, that that formula is off. And we're fighting to get that formula basically rewritten at this point. So we are working hard. The longer you push this off, the more time I'm going to have to work and continue to work as hard as I possibly can to get as much money to this district as we possibly can get. Like I said the last meeting and the meeting before that, you know, you guys are doing a great job. I trust no one else other than you guys to secure these positions. There's nobody better than you guys up there. And we're going to do what we need to do to try and get as much money to you as possible. And I truly hope that it works out, and just don't leave any stone unturned, is the only thing I'm going to ask. On a side note to that, Alan, I want to just echo what you said. We witnessed a miracle this past few weeks. The administration did something that no one thought that they could do, and no one could do, and they pulled it off. Having a school within a school right now is truly a miracle, how that happened in such a short period of time. And to show our gratitude, we're going to keep the miracle going by providing high-quality education to these students in this setting and make sure that they're as least impacted as possible. But I just want to thank the administration and the administrative team for everything that they did in such a short period of time, and to get our middle school back into a building. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
I just want to also echo and take the opportunity to thank all of you guys for all the changes that you guys have been going through, right? Not only from the middle school, but from the high school, making the accommodations for the students to come in and still have an in-person education. I think that's huge, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. We have our consent agenda, items E-A1 to D.3. If anyone wants to pull out any particular item to have discussion, we can do that. I'd like to pull out item 3 under Business and Operations, just so the entire board's aware of what has transpired since our initial bid date of Phase 2, and where we are today, and why we're making some changes here. So I'd like to pull that out, and we'll handle that separately once we have some discussion and information given to each board member. Yeah. So we'll move...need a motion to move our consent items from E-A1 to D.1 and D.2. Have a motion. Motion by Tom, second by Camille. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried? Going back to Business and Operations under item 3, release of contract and award of contract. I'll read it, and then we'll have discussion. Be resolved the Board of Education upon a recommendation the superintendent approves a settlement mutual release agreement with Mid Hudson Construction Management, Inc., in substantially the form as attached, subject to the final recommendation of negotiated terms by the district's attorneys, and further authorizes the superintendent to execute such settlement mutual release agreement. And be it further resolved that effective upon the approval of the aforementioned settlement mutual release agreement, the Board of Education and Highland Central School District, I. rescind the February 13, 2024 resolution awarding the general construction contract number 2-01 on Phase 2 of the 2022 capital improvement project, contract number 2-01 to Mid Hudson Construction Management, Inc., and II awards contract number 2-01 to Ferrari &amp; Sons, Inc., in a total sum of $3,461,000, inclusive of its base contract bid, plus alternate numbers GC201001 Highland Middle School for the Library, GC201002 Highland Middle School Locker Room, GC201003 Highland High School Gym, and further authorizes the superintendent to execute contract number 2-01 with Ferrari &amp; Sons, Inc. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Heather. Discussion. Just to fill everyone in, and I'm sure, and we have Scott Butler from the Palumbo Group in the back. Scott, could you come up, because I'm sure the board's going to have some questions? Director of Facilities, Peter Miller, is here also. Can you just briefly go through the steps that occurred in the last two months that precipitated us going to rescind our original general contractor and moving to the second lowest bidder, and how that will affect the budget?
So the past two months, as you guys were on the last award, we go through progress meetings, go through statuses, submittals, contracts, insurances. In that process, the general contractor continued to go through their budget and their estimate. They found conflicting items that they felt uncomfortable with progressing through the job. At that point, since the project was already awarded, there were legal implications to go through to rescind them, and that what has prospered the past couple of weeks. In the similar process we went through and did the same qualification and vetting process for the second low bidder, Ferrari &amp; Sons, Inc., again, going through what did they include in their bid, what did they have in their schedule, the same process that we go through every contractor for the bid recommendations. And at the end of the day, I think the Mid Hudson CM felt that the items within their And at the end of the day, I think the Mid Hudson CM felt that the items within their bid, there were items in the contract that weren't necessarily associated with the bid. We felt it was the best reason or the best way to cut ties and move forward with another contractor. As far as the budgets, it does increase the amount of funds that we needed to award to the G C, but we have that capital with the already approved alternates within the current budget set to award.
The design team feels comfortable that being going from one contract to the second lowest bidder, that the gap there was $645,000 plus dollars, that we have that in contingency to cover that at this point in time?
Yes, we still have a modest balance remaining.
How much?
$192,000. And that's inclusive of a couple of change orders that we're looking to price and some additional work we haven't yet authorized. And that's in addition to the carried contingency that we haven't touched yet, so.
And we're confident that being that we're bringing on the second lowest bidder almost two months after the original bid, that they will be able to perform as per the contract documents to the best of their ability to get the work completed by school opening in September?
In the progress meetings, we'll identify any items that may be at risk and bring that to the attention of the teams. That way, we can resolve those appropriately.
And if some of the work due to delays or procurement of materials and such cause some of the items not to be completed by September, what's the game plan to move to complete those items during the school year or are we putting that off until September of, July of 2025?
I think it all depends on what items those are, right? There are items that we may collectively as a team decide not to move forward this summer, right? Saying that's in their bid, move it to 2025. Obviously, we don't want to put any of the school openings at risk if we feel comfortable with things that are itemized, such as doors and hardware, right? They're not coming for August. But that doesn't preclude us from taking, you know, some of them off, right? So that way, they'd be available. And then when they do show up, we'll coordinate their installations.
And will the award of the second lowest bidder for the G C portion, their possible delays because of procurement of materials and such cause any conflicts with the other prime contractors that have already been awarded two months ago?
Most of the work for the other primes, mainly the mechanical work, is slighted to schedule in 2025, so that shouldn't be affected. The G C acts as more of a support role in 2025. They are a primary leader in 2024, but they are non-classroom or operational space, right? So we'll have to make that decision to move forward. What we want to be aware of is if we delay them, what impacts it have to other trades? If we were to take, like, say, the food service office and push that to 2025? But again, operations is the number one priority. It's where we'll have to make sure we are ready to go and communicate that with everybody if that would be a different story.
Any board member have any questions, concerns?
I don't have questions, but I do have a lot of concerns with this, with the fact that we awarded this to the second highest, to the second lowest bidder two months after the fact, and we can't identify if it's going to affect the timeline.
We can identify what items might be risk factors, right? And then track them through the next three months of procurement processes, right? We know, like, for instance, doors will be an issue, right? We can work through our installation practices to make sure that the district isn't impeded by that.
Anyone else?
On your question, I felt as we move forward with this and making this move to go to the second lowest bidder, that we were saving time versus going out to rebid to make sure that we were closer to being positive that we were going to finish on time. Otherwise, we'd be delayed for numerous weeks as we put that together. So, in this plan of doing this, plus coordinating some of the stuff that goes on with the G C and the current conditions in the middle school, putting that all together to make it work has been kind of a game between dominos and checkers. So, now it's starting to come together.
Just so everybody in the audience realizes that this, again, is capital project money, not affected the general budget. So, this money is already allocated through community vote to, allocated to both our Phase 1 and Phase 2. My last question, Scott, how are we proceeding now with being Phase 1, Phase 2 going simultaneously this summer? Does everything seem to be on target for especially Phase 1 for completion for the most part by September?
Yeah, so the key procurement items for Phase 1 was the bus lift and the lockers. They're on schedule, bus lift delivery, end of May, early June, working with the district on when is the appropriate time to take the bus lift out of service. Lockers will be removed at the start of the summer, and we've actually completed 10% of the middle, or the elementary school lights and ceilings over spring break. So, we're on par there.
And provisions have been made for our site contractor now that we have a school within a school and our parking lots are packed solid, there's staff and students coming in and out. Are they comfortable with moving through that phase of the project utilizing the parking lot during, during school time?
So, what we have done as of yesterday, was the first official day of work, we have taken a construction lane per the contract documents, right, adjacent to the bus fence where contractors can come in and out, you know, almost as if they were a bus entrance, unimpeded of the operational staff and students. That way, we can keep that separation, especially during arrivals and dismissals.
Peter, what provisions will be provided now that we don't have a gymnasium for phys ed and any other outdoor activities going from the building to the, let's say, the turf field for any type of outdoor activities while construction vehicles are going back and forth? Are they providing some flaggers to make sure that there's no vehicles going while students are walking to and from?
So, I had a, I had a discussion with Mr. Murphy today in regard to that because the turf field will be accessible for phys ed and teams after school if they're going to use it. The only time that we're going to have to be somewhat more cautious with what's going on is when the truck traffic is actually hauling the dirt that's in the field out of there. That'll probably be a one-week situation at that time with the site supervisor and the contractor. We'll work that out to make sure that it's 100% safe and make sure that everybody's aware that it's not just run and go, it's, you know, there's got to be caution that's involved. The gate was installed in the turf field, so it's accessible from the parking lot side instead of the football field side. And there is a gate in the safety fence to allow people to go across. So, we're probably be in some position, if there's a lot of truck traffic, that there will have some sort of a crossing guard or something if that's required at the time that classes change, so.
Anyone else? Camille?
I just want to go back to, you mentioned going into the contingency fund. Do we know how much of that we're going to go into based on the switch in the contracts?
How much of the contingency?
Well, how much, you said that we were going to, because we're switching, we started with one group, we're going to another, that there may be a little dip in the funds?
No, no. So, all of the contractors are required to carry a set allowance. The district board approves said expenditures, the allowance, almost like a change order from contractor to contractor, that value stayed the same. So, we were carrying $690,000 between Phase 1 and Phase 2 in allowances. They'll be our first dip when it comes to change orders or differing site conditions. And then after we advance all that money to the contractors, then they start getting into change orders. Again, that's all board-approved funds. And anything that is not spent from the contractor is complete, actually gets put back in the contractor pot or the capital project pot, right? So then we'll see how much money is left over after Phase 1 to consider additional work for next summer.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, everybody's satisfied, we'll move forward. Thank you, Scott, Peter. We have a motion by Camille and seconded by Heather to move the release of contract forward and to move the award to the second low bidder for Phase 2 of the G C contract. No further discussion. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Boyd, you're up.
Good evening. We're going to be posting some of our positions for our summer services that our students require, so we'll be doing some hiring for that over the next few weeks. Our third quarter progress reports are coming to a close, so that is inclusive of our homeschool reports as well as our IEP progress reports. So, our teachers have been working on that. I do just want to point out that you approved earlier a well over 200 meeting minutes, so a big thank you to all of the staff for all their flexibility and hard work in preparation for all of those annual review, reevaluation, and initial eligibility meetings. So, again, a big thank you to them. As Ms. Idell mentioned earlier, we've been working on finalizing our BOSI's FSR, which we will be doing over the next few weeks. And finally, at the end of the month, we'll start conducting some of our preschool visits. So, some of these are with our preschools connected to our UPK program and other ones are for some of our students with disabilities, specific programs. So, we'll make sure that we are well-prepared for their entrance into kindergarten come
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Mr. Zimmer, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items to share with you. First, we, New York State, across New York State, there's an updated mandated reported training requirement for all certificated educators. As many of us are aware, all certificated educators in New York State must take child abuse reporting training to receive New York State certification. Recent amendments to the social services law now require additional training to include protocols to reduce implicit bias in decision-making processes, strategies for identifying adverse childhood experiences, and guidelines to assist in recognizing signs of abuse or maltreatment. It's crucial to note that these updates apply to all mandated reporters irrespective of previous training completion. Therefore, it's imperative that every certified educator completes the new curriculum to remain compliant with state regulations. That said, I link for a two-hour web-based online training was emailed to all of our certificated employees. The course meets the New York State Education Department mandatory requirements for training in child abuse identification and reporting. This updated training must be completed to maintain proper certification with New York State. All of our district's certificated educators will be allotted time to go through the training within the next few months before the end of the school year. I will note that it's not required to, for the employees to actually take the new training until April 1, 2025, 2025, but we thought we'd get a head start on it so we didn't have to worry about it during the next school year. Next, I do have a UPK program update. The district UPK committee met last week to review UPK proposals, and we have accepted proposals from three local preschools. At this time, we anticipate that we will be able to double the allocation of our program from 40 to 80 seats for the 2024-25 school year. Though, I have to point out, like many other aspects of public education, this number will depend on the passing of the New York State budget, which hopefully will be finalized and released soon, hopefully Thursday. Once the state budget is released, we will update the contracts, move forward with this process. I will, of course, continue to keep the Board of Education apprised of our progress at every stage of this endeavor. Finally, the district-wide direct committee meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, April 23rd, that's next Tuesday, that has been rescheduled to Tuesday, May 14th. More information about that to follow. If anybody is interested in attending that on Tuesday, May 14th, that should be an in-person meeting, please reach out to myself or the district liaison, Harriet Meyer. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Zimmer?
Just a quick question on UPK. With the increase in the number of seats, which is phenomenal, does that come with an increased cost to the district?
No.
Okay. That's amazing. Even better.
Yes, even better.
Thank you.
Currently, just three facilities are going to, so we had three last year with 40 students.
Exactly.
This year, we're going to double the enrollment.
Number with the same number of preschools.
So, they have the capacity to fulfill that?
Two of them have drastically increased their number, right, for us, to accommodate us, which is fantastic news, something honestly I didn't expect.
Right. Good.
That's great news.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Bill. Our superintendent report?
Okay, so last Friday night, we met for our annual foundation dinner. We honored three members of the community and raised money for the furniture at the outdoor classroom. It was a great event, well-attended. I don't know if our local politicians will want to show up to that anymore because they got harassed by me to get more money for education, but it was nice to see, see them in attendance. I will say, Assemblyman Jacobson promised that he was going back to Albany to fight for education, and local legislator Gina Hansit, I had her ear for quite a while. Gina has been working very diligently within Ulster County to get things in place. She can't do necessarily anything with state government, but I tried. And I will say that she was also instrumental in helping get us some materials when we were trying to do the school within a school. So, it's nice to see that those folks do care, even if they, in Albany, they don't give us the funding that we need. But the foundation dinner was wonderful. I encourage people to come out for that in the future. I don't have a final number on how much was raised. I don't know if Heather has calculated that up yet?
I have calculated, but we have not released it yet, so we will be releasing that within the next day or so.
Okay, so I'll get that to the board on Friday, and I will announce it at next Tuesday's board meeting. Again, I'm going to echo what the, the board president said about the school within a school, moving the middle school to the high school that started yesterday. We had a morning reorientation, basically, of our middle school students, and today they were here for the full day. With any plan like this, it's not without some, some hiccups, but I will say that the staff has been incredible. The administrators are working very hard to make this work, and I want to thank the students for trying to be as positive as they possibly can be. And this is mostly for the high school students at this point. I'm sure the middle school students will come around, but the high school students were grumbling last week when they had to alter their plans. And today, I saw some smiles and I saw some kids, you know, saying thank you to the adults for getting their younger brothers and sisters in, in attendance here. I will also say, the morning that the middle school started, so this would be yesterday morning, we had a cadre of high school students at the main entrance in the front where the students come off the bus for the middle school and also in the back where the car riders come in, and our high school students were there to cheer them on, welcome them back. It just made for a really nice atmosphere. So, thank you to the administration for getting that up and going. We've already heard about our capital project, but it's exciting that the fencing is now up. So, if you look out there during the day, there is a travel lane for the vehicles that will be going to the field. And I plan to get to the elementary school. I've been trying to get down there, but I have not had a chance yet, but six classrooms have already had their ceilings But six classrooms have already had their ceilings redone. These would be six standalone classrooms that don't have the walls between them so that they were able to put the new lighting in and the new ceilings. I have gotten a couple of questions about when are the dimmer switches coming because the lights are a little bit brighter than than folks are used to. I promise you that's coming, but that's not something that could be done in this first phase, but it's on its way. And then on a final note, and I don't know that I should even mention this right now, but we, as a district, do not feel that our middle school students are going to be in a great situation as far as New York State testing goes. So, we have done an appeal to New York State to try to waive the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade assessments just because of the environment that they will be in here in the high school. We've been, we've gotten one response back so far that they were willing to work with us. And then we got another response saying, well, that's not really our decision, it's a federal decision. So, the state won't come out and give us an answer. That's one of the things Gina Hansett is out there trying to promote. She's calling Senator Jill Brandon, Senator Schumer, to try to get them on board with that. It's not that we don't want our kids taking tests. We think they're important, but we want them to take them in the most appropriate environment possible. We just don't know that these module classrooms are going to be the most appropriate spaces. But if we're told we have to do it, we will do it as we always do, and we will afford the children the best opportunity that they can have to take those assessments. Our other concern is this is the first year that they would be doing them all computer-based, which we're ready for, but in an environment where there's extra noises around and they're in different environment, we just don't know that it would be a true picture. So, hence the reason why we've put the appeal out. I don't believe that we will be granted that appeal. Just my gut is telling me that they're going to tell us no, and we will start planning to have those assessments underway. And I think that's all that I have for the night, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? You sure that's all?
Oh, did I talk too long? I know I do.
What was the initial date for the ELA math and science tests?
The window opens this week.
Yes.
So, I don't know if Andy might know. Was the middle school date published for the ELA for this week?
For staff, we never send out the families, but it was going to be, we're going to start ELA next week on Wednesday and Thursday, and the following week is going to be math. And then in early, I'm saying Wednesday and Thursday, and in early in May is going to be the science.
The one thing that I will say that the state did say is they would provide us some flexibility. They might lengthen the amount of time that we have so that if we needed to do it in smaller groups. So, the state seems to want to work with us, but it's a federal mandate. So, they don't know that they're going to be able to allow us to waive those tests.
Yeah, I know the window goes until almost late May to get everything done, so there's time. But just thinking about, as you said, the space and having salience parts of the building and test mods, like it could be a big undertaking if...
Well, the difficult, the other difficult piece that we're going to run into is, you know, Regents exams, those are, the school has basically closed down the high school portions of the building. And so, we feel that Regents exams would be okay. AP exams are another thing that we are concerned with, and we are looking at some alternate locations to possibly offer those AP exams because they happen in the, they happen when they happen, and you can't modify those dates. So, we've reached out to Ulster BOSI's. Ulster BOSI's has offered us space on, we're going to take a tour. I think Brandon's heading over there this week to take a look at the space. But the Jane Bulowah Conference Center can be broken into four quadrants, and we would just have to get our students over there. So, on the days of the AP exams that have a larger population that take them, that might be the better space for them. You know, the smaller tests that only are a couple kids here or there, we might be able to do them somewhere more centralized to this building. But we're looking at all of those, all of those issues right now.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you, Joel. Okay. Under Board of Education, our new business, just to let everyone know, Ulster County BOSI's budget adoption is going to be at our next meeting on April 16th. We'll be voting on adopting their proposed budget.
One thing I forgot to mention about that budget vote. BOSI's is presenting a video at the Uxpa meeting on Thursday. That's the one that's held at the center on, in Port Ewen. That's where our students actually serve dinner, and they serve as waiters and waitresses. So, any board members that can come out that night and join me at that, that's a good event to see our students in action. And then Dr. Schenker will be presenting the budget, but he also is going to give us a video portion of it. So, as soon as I have the video portion, I will make sure the board members that are not able to attend can see that so that you have an informed, you know, when you make your decision next week.
Joel, I have one question. You've mentioned BOSI's. Do you know when they're going to be able to present us with the BOSI's lease for the I Park 87 project?
I knew you were going to ask me that because you asked me the other day. So, I actually did call Dr. Schenker. It is running through the last stages of their legal counsel now, and then our legal councils will all have an opportunity to review that. So, it should be within the next week or two. I also mentioned for all of the board members that we share legal counsel with other districts. So, I was trying to wait to have one of them have it reviewed, and then we would just go along with it so that they would pay the bill and, anyway, to save a couple dollars. I was informed that we will be sharing that cost between the component districts that use our attorneys. So, I didn't get to save us any money there.
Under all business, cell phone usage, continue our discussion. I know we're missing two board members, and one in particular, Mike Pocopsias, has provided us with a draft policy. I believe he emailed it to all board members. I don't want to get into too much of a discussion without, you know, Mike being here and Ed being here. I know we'll be able to continue the discussion and hopefully have a policy in place for implementation, probably for, you know, the start of the school year in September. I just want to make sure that the board, we had asked the superintendent to reach out to other school districts for any policies or any student code of conduct or any kind of student handbook that addresses cell phone use. And through our legal counsel, he was able to come up with a few, she was able to come up with a few districts. So, go back to that email. It's about a month ago. There's Valley Central on there, which is very good. There's Brewster School District, which is very good. Take a look at those student handbook code of conduct references to cell phone use, and we can continue the discussion and hopefully all be on the same page. Kudos to the staff. The presentation that was made from the high school staff at the last meeting kind of gives us a feeling that, you know, we're all on board with trying to control the use of cell phones and allow the students to have a good, positive learning experience and not be distracted by their neighbor's cellphone sitting next to them or whoever else. So, I think this is a positive approach to student learning in a good environment. So, we're not out there to terminate cell phone usage in a school building. We're out there to try to promote positive environment for educational purposes. So, I commend the staff for working with us on that. And with that being said, and I've mentioned this many a times sitting up here as president of the Board of Education, that I like to see a turnout like this of staff, both from support staff and the teaching staff, because we're, we're not the enemy. We're here to work with you. I know we work well with Kevin Rizzo, but if any of you have comments, concerns, or want to start some dialogue, come to our meetings, and we'll be happy to start that dialogue. I mean, some of our meetings are boring, so we want to have some lively input from staff so we can have some positive discussion that's going to benefit our students. I mean, that's what we're here for. This Board of Education is not here for a paycheck. We do not get a paycheck. We're here to work with our staff and to promote a positive learning experience for our students, no matter what it is. I mean, we implemented capital projects and a turf field for students, our outdoor learning pavilion at the elementary school for our students. So, we're here to promote positive environments for them. So, I entertain and invite you to come to every one of our meetings. It's not a large group like this. Come in as a small group and give us a heads up and say you want to discuss whatever it may be. We're here to do it, believe me. Anyone else on the board have any comments? Camille?
Yeah, I know it's been said a few times, but, you know, Heather, Tom, and I got a chance to go and tour the high school and just to see how the setup was. I just want to again thank everyone for all the work. I know the compromise of having to share rooms and try to get kids educated, that's what we're here for. But just I want to appreciate you all, staff, staff that's not here, but I know it took a lot of work, and some of you lost spring break. So, just again, want to thank you from the boards for all the work that you've done to make sure our kids can continue learning in person. So, thank you.
My last comment is, I know you go by your unit leadership to tell you that you have to come to these meetings, but I'm going to say it from the Board of Education, please come to our meetings and have that discussion. Whatever's on your mind, let's have that discussion. It's just positive. So, anything for the good and welfare of the district? Okay. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and hopefully we have some positive comments coming forward.
Hi there, everybody. I'm Leigh Weaver. I'm a third-grade teacher currently in Long Island District. I'm in my 24th year here, my 28th year altogether of teaching in the public education system. It's nice to see the appearance of two former students of mine sitting here, and I hope they're both doing well and thriving. So, I came to sit with, in solidarity with my colleagues that are, have been put on notice that they might lose their jobs. And I feel that you share the pain that we have. So, I'm not really here to say anything about that, but as I was listening, some topics came up that are important to me, and I just want to make some questions or comments about those. One of them is the mandatory training that is, that Bill spoke about. You mentioned that the deadline for this is the end of June of this year, despite the fact that the state has set a due date of April 1st of 2025, almost a year from now. And I'm just asking that in light of all the stress, not just for the people that are sitting here, but for the people that are in these, the school within a school situation, the people who are administering online state testing in 3, 4, and 5 without training, just the packing of the rooms in that elementary school, all these areas of added stress that we have this year. Would you please consider extending that timeframe?
May I respond?
And I don't expect an answer now, I'm just...
Of course, you have until April 1st, 2025. The date of June 30th, that's the time between now and then. We're giving you time to do that. If you choose not to do that during the time, you can do it March of 2025, up to you, as long as you get it done.
March 31st.
That is nothing, that's your, this is your certification with the state. It's really not our thing.
Okay.
So, my due date, that's the time we're giving you between now and then.
Okay. I understood. I also noticed in your email that you sent to us on Friday that it said you want certificates of completion by June 30th. So, that's why I'm asking you to extend that and make that official, that you are willing to take certificates after that point, if you will.
I apologize if I mistyped the email.
Okay.
Yes, that is fine.
Okay.
You have until April 1st, 2025.
Thank you. All right. On to the next one. I just wanted to also ask, or I just share an observation, that it seems to me like the people over there at that little round table, they know the, some sort of a timeline for when I need to pack my classroom and the rest of us need to make some adjustments in the learning environments of very young children. So, to the extent that you can, would you please let us know what that timeline is? We have some, just general ideas going here, like, you know, pack your bags on the superintendent's day, and thank you for giving us that time to do that, if that's what it comes to be. But what are we packing? We can't pack for the rest of the year on that day, and is, you know, just anything else that we might need to be aware of? Please tell us, even if it needs to change. You know, I've had construction projects at my house. In fact, I have a bathroom counter that still needs to be replaced by a contractor months, months later. So, I understand that things have to change, and things don't always go according to plan. But to the extent possible, could you get what they have already outlined into our hands, whatever is appropriate for us to know, so we can plan accordingly? Please.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure our construction management team and along with Mr. Miller from Director of Facilities will give you ample time and tell you what you have to do and, you know, when and where.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Come on, there's got to be another one. No? Mr. Rizzo? You're done?
Yeah, we're working.
All right. Okay. We'll close public comment, and I'll ask the board for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Janine, seconded by Heather. Everybody wants to adjourn. All those in favor? No? [laughing]. Pose.